Town manager, I appreciate you for joining us. This is the town manager's hearing for the spring 2022 town meeting. I'm joined this evening by Patty Halick from the town manager's office, who will be helping to manage the Zoom.
Excuse me, Beth. I actually am going to start recording.
Oh, thank you, Patty.
Just want to give you a heads up.
Recording in progress. Okay.
The goal for this evening is to give folks a chance to ask clarifying questions regarding the 35 town meeting articles we have coming up this springtime meeting. I'll be giving a brief overview on each one, and then we'll open up the Florida questions for town meeting members. We ask that you use either the raise hand function or the Q and A feature for your questions. And questions received from anonymous attendees will not be answered. You must state your name for the record. The proponents of several of the articles are not sponsored by either the town manager or the select board are here this evening. And I will be allowing each person to provide a brief statement on their respective articles if they choose before I open up for questions. I will not be discussing the two articles associated with the special town meeting for the Waterfield lot. Town meeting will be asked on the first night of town meeting to postpone discussion of those articles to a time certain that the date of which is still being finalized. And we expect that there'll be a separate hearing scheduled for those articles at a later date. So with that, unless anybody has any questions before we get started, I'm going to share my screen and jump right into the PowerPoint presentation and the going through the slides here. And Patty, once I start sharing, I can't see if folks have their hand raised. So if you could just let me know as we go through, if there's questions, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Article One. Article One is a majority vote. This item is being put on the consent agenda and the sponsor or proponent is the select board. This article is to hear the reports of town officers and finance committees. Articles like this, I think, are pretty standard, so I'm not going to, unless I hear objections. Otherwise, I'm not planning to open it up for questions. But if you do have anything, just please raise your hand and we'll get to you as we go through. Article Two is a majority vote, and the proponent is the planning board, and this article is to hear the report of the planning board. Article Three is a majority vote, and this item is on the consent agenda. The proponent is the Committee on Rules. And this article is being indefinitely postponed, so we'll have no questions for this one. Article Four is a majority of vote consent agenda. The proponent of this is the Board of Library Trustees. This article is to see if the town will rename the Roger H. Bauman Trust Fund to the Roger H. and Priscilla Bauman Trust Fund and to permit the income of the fund to be spent on the purchase of art and design books and materials, regardless of time period or geographic location, or to take any action related there, too. Any questions on this one? Or if there's anybody here from the Library Board of Trustees that wants to make a statement? Okay, hearing none, I'll go on to Article Five. Article Five is a majority vote. The proponent of this article is the Select Board. This article is to create an employee healthcare and health insurance stabilization fund in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section 5B. The goal of this is to create the funds that would allow a stabilization fund that will be used to offset and set aside funds related to the unpredicted expenses for employee healthcare. In FY22, health insurance costs represented approximately 8.8% of the town's overall budget. Springtime meeting is being asked only to create the funds, not to appropriate money into the funds. And town meeting would be required to appropriate funds in and out of this fund, excuse me, would be required to appropriate money in and out of this fund in the future. If approved, the Select Board would develop a policy for these appropriations. Any questions on this article? Okay, hearing none.
There's one hand. Roger's up. Okay, Roger, I'm allowing you to talk.
Go ahead, Roger.
Is there a draft of the Can you hear me?
We had, yes, thanks.
Yeah, is there a draft of the policies that the Select Board would develop?
There's not a draft at this time, no.
Okay, it would be helpful to have one if we're voting.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you, Roger. Anyone else? Okay. Article Six. Article Six is a two-thirds vote. The proponent of this is the Select Board. This vote is to authorize the Select Board to transfer custody and control of the land identified as the well-filled property on the plan shown here on the slide to the school committee for school purposes. In this case, the town has the school committee is moving forward the renovation of the Lynch School and then looking at alternatives for where to build that school on site. The preferred alternative actually uses part of what was previously a well-filled property in back dating back into the 1950s. The well field itself has been abandoned for over 60 years, and the pump house that was previously located there was razed in the 1960s. Town management and the EFPBC are currently working together with an engineering firm to prepare the permits to officially decommission the wells. So the goal is to transfer this property as is required by the MSBA from the Select Board to the school committee, which would allow the use of this land for school building purposes. Any questions on this one?
Roger's up again. Go ahead, Roger.
My question is, there are other parcels in this well set up on, and the bike path goes down between them.
The bike path is over here at the
Right.
Yep, so it's just this piece that's being shown in red that's being transferred from the Select Board to the school committee.
Are the other pieces still in use for wells?
This is the only piece that was ever, by my knowledge, used as a well field. The areas over here, where you talk about the bike path going through, to my knowledge, there were not well fields in that area.
There's some kind of a reservoir or pond in the next one over. It's partially shown there. If I recall correctly. Yeah, the question, what's the disposition of the other parcels associated?
There's no other land being transferred other than the land that's outlined in red here from the Select Board to the school committee control.
Thanks.
Sure, yep.
I have Candace is next.
Go ahead.
The question is, does the school have a plan for that area which would necessitate the transfer? What's causing the transfer?
Yeah, so the school department and the EFPBC are currently working on plans for the reconstruction of a new Lynch School building. I don't have a slide this evening showing where the new school will be, but it's basically this is, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this is basically the footprint of the existing school building, and the proposed building will be somewhere over here where the existing parking drive aisles are, and then we'll encroach somewhat into the well-filled property. And so in order for that that school building to be reconstructed in that area, the MSBA, who's the Massachusetts School Building Authority, requires the school committee to have full control of all of the land. And so this piece, whereas now it's controlled by the Select Board, has to be transferred to the school committee for control. And I'm sure, I don't know if there's somebody from the EFPBC on this call if you want to elaborate further on what I said. I know that there is a website for the Lynch Project. I think it's Lynch 2025 that I'm sure has more information on the specific location for the school.
I just moved Chris Nixon in.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Hi, Beth. Sure, and just to, I was only, I raised my hand initially to make the very point you did about why this is necessary procedurally. Thank you for the plug for the website, Lynch2025.com. We'll show Candace and anyone else where the preferred option is that's been developed. So if we were actually going to pursue this Lynch Project on our own without partnership with the MSBA, this article would not be necessary because it basically is townland today, and it'll still be townland after the transfer. The issue is that for the executive board of the MSBA to actually vote to participate with us in the Lynch Project, which of course is a financial partnership, we have to have full control of the property. So at the southern edge of the site that Beth was just illustrating, we have some overlap with some substantial portions of the building. We are allowed to submit the preferred option to the MSBA for them to review it. And in fact, we already have, but for them to actually approve it, we have to have the land.
Thank you. Any other questions on this one?
Yes, Sam Allison, I'm going to bring her in.
Go ahead, Sam.
Hi, thanks. It's actually, I put a question on the Q and A for Article Five, so if you have others on Article Six, I'm happy for you to come back to me after.
There are two more people for Article Six.
Yeah, so keep going. I don't want to disrupt that.
Thanks. And Patty, I can't see the Q and A because I'm sharing the screen, so if you could just let me know. Actually, no.
Sam's question is, yeah, okay. So the next person up is Tony Conti.
Go ahead, Tony.
What will happen after the new school is constructed? Do there any plans as to the old building? And if it will be removed, will the land be transferred back to the Select Board? The land that's occupied by the old building?
So I don't believe there's any right now where the current school is, is under control of the school committee. Only this piece that's outlined in red and shaded in red is under the control of the Select Board.
I'm asking, after the new school is constructed, what, do we have any plans for the old building?
I'll let Chris answer that.
Thank you for the question, Tony. We don't have plans for the building itself. It will be abated and demolished, but we have plans for the land that it sits on. So that will, where the current building sits today will basically become the front of the new school. So this is where our parking areas will be, the roadways. We'll still have two entrances to the site as we have today. Some playfields, playgrounds, and so forth. So that'll be the last piece of the project once the new building sort of takes shape. So that'll basically become the front of the new building.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further question on Article Six? Okay. I'll go back to your question, Sam, on Article Five, which is, why do we need this, I think, was your question, correct?
Yeah, I saw the background, Beth, but I was just sort of curious what prompted us now to be thinking about this.
Yeah, so we're actually considering a possible change in health insurance providers this year, subject to review by our and approval by our insurance advisor committee and our union members. And so there was a discussion, obviously, healthcare is obviously one of the most volatile pieces of the town's budget, hard to predict from year to year. So the Select Board is, would like to move forward the creation of a stabilization fund that we can set aside money and to help to kind of offset years we might see really, you know, exorbitant increases in those health insurance costs that might help kind of smooth things over from year to year. We might have a good year versus a bad year. So that was, that was the board's goal there.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. And I see, yeah, sorry, there's one other question about the
And I'm bringing him in also.
Thank you.
Mike, you're in.
Six.
Sorry, I just had the question, where is the floodplain in relation to this property that's transferring Article Six?
So, and Chris, I don't have I don't have this committed to memory, but a large portion of the field in this area is floodplain. I don't have the exact boundaries. Now, Chris, you have better rememberings of how much of it is.
Well, I have the memory of it, but I think the best thing, as you said, Beth, would just be to direct people to go to Lynch2025.com. There is a link to the site that you can click on that actually shows the 100-year floodplain, the 500-year floodplain, and other sort of restrictions and setbacks on the site that does cut basically diagonally across the parcel. So you'll get a lot of good information there, Lynch2025.com.
Thank you, Chris.
But the proposed building is being constructed outside of the 100-year floodplain.
Yes, that's absolutely right.
Any further question on Article Six? I see a question from Roger in the chat. Where is the documentation of the warrant? I'm not sure they understand that question. Roger, if you want to jump back on to clarify. Okay, if not, we can keep going here. Okay. Next, we have Article Seven. This is a majority vote. The proponent is the Retiree Health Insurance Advisory Committee. And this is to see if the town will vote to add a new Section 4.8 to Chapter Two of the Code of Bylaws to create a retiree health insurance advisory committee. And I believe Peter Schimetz might be here from the proponent. If you want to make a statement, Peter, before I open up for questions.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so this is an ad hoc committee. We've been around for about seven years. And our main goal was, I don't know how many people remember what was going on at the time, but there was some kerfuffle about paying for retirees' healthcare and also paying for OPEP at the time. So those two issues were kind of combined into this committee. And our role was to figure out how to work with retirees and communicate with them and look at how how much the town contributed and how they contributed and how the retirees interacted with the town in determining how much and what plans they got. And then finally, also to look at funding OPEP. So over the course of seven years, we've pretty much met our initial charter. And it was really kind of time to decide whether or not we made a final report and ended our tenure or moved on to being a more permanent committee of the town, of the town meeting. And this is what we decided to do. This committee would remain, would remain with largely the same charter, only more of an ongoing thing rather than a where are we thing. And would add two two new members, one from the active school employment population and one a rep from the school committee. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Peter. I'll open up to any questions that folks may have. Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to Article Eight. Article Eight is a majority vote, and this is a citizen petition. The article is asking that town meeting authorize the Select Board to petition the general court to enact legislation substantially in the form below and to further authorize the Select Board to approve amendments to such legislation before its enactment by the general court. That shall be within the scope of the general objectives of the petition. I'm not going to read the entire language here, but the request is to enact to extend local voting rights to all adult residents of the town of Winchester. And I believe the proponent, Phil Clooney or Susan Riddick, you may be here if you want to make a statement before I open it up to questions.
I'm moving him in.
Thank you. Go ahead, Phil.
Hello. I'd like to say that the, this is a little more complicated than some articles. And a lot of information, background information, is available in two places, the League of Women Voters of Winchester website and the Network for Social Justice website. Part of the information there are some FAQs that were vetted with the town council, so there's some clarity about what the article means. And there are also recordings of the, of a community-wide meeting last night. And by the way, there's only one L in Philip. And Philip Coonley. And I'm laughing because I noticed in our in our article, there's a spelling error, but and that, that's, and we were warned if it was a spelling error, it would, it would remain throughout. So we know, we know it's the United States, not the United States. But probably you could take the L out of Philip.
Okay, thank you. Susan, did you have anything further?
No, thank you. I think that pretty much says it all. The only thing I would add is that, just to, you know, create some clarity around this. If this were enacted, it would apply to non-citizens who are legally resident in the United States and in Winchester. And it has a limited ability to vote, and that's only in local elections. And the other point to be made is that there are some 1,200 adult, non-citizen residents of Winchester. And so that's not an inconsiderable portion of our population, and these people, you know, live here, pay taxes, own property, or run businesses, send their children to school, and it would be good if they could have the opportunity to have their input and their voices heard on local decision-making.
Great, thank you, Susan. There is one question in the chat that I see from Tony Conti. It says, if non-citizens are allowed to vote because they pay taxes, why shouldn't non-residents who own property also be allowed to vote?
Well, my answer to that would be, that's not what's being proposed. I, that's a different set of questions and considerations, and I don't know if I would support that or not, but certainly, this, these are people who live in Winchester.
Okay, thank you, Susan. I'll open it up to any questions that folks may have. Use the raise your hand feature.
Okay, I'm bringing in Candace first. There's several other people.
Okay, go ahead, Candace. You're on mute, Candace.
Sorry, I don't have a question. I pass.
Okay, thank you.
Pamela Court is next.
Go ahead, Pamela.
Hi, thank you. I really appreciate this warrant article, and I'm in favor of it, but I do have some questions about it, just to clarify some things. And I'd just like to say, I believe, you know, just in the spirit of no taxation without representation, in terms of, I don't know how Tony would identify non-residents who own property and whether or not they are registered to vote in another area, because it does get a little murky. This is, this warrant article, I think, to me, is a little bit more clear-cut. But a couple of questions. It does say in the motion book that, and in the language of the warrant article, that they would have the right to vote in town and the right to serve on town meeting. But it's not, is there, does that mean that they are being excluded from running for a major board such as Select Board, Planning Board, Board of Health, you know, any of the, your school committee, any of the elected boards? And how would that impact their ability to perhaps serve on an appointed board? So I'm curious about that and whether that's been thought out. Susan gave the numbers of people. I, you know, we have so many incredible non-citizens living in this town that contribute to the culture of the town, so I do hope that, that people consider that and consider their voices important because they make amazing contributions. So my question is about what clarity on what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. And then also just perhaps some clarity on how they're verified and how they're how we decide how they move on to the voter rolls and how they move off of the voter rolls, and whether that's something that would be like a yearly process and just what, my question would be, what cost is associated with this? I think the cost is worth it, likely, but I would want to know what cost is associated with it, what's involved in the town clerk's office, and just make sure that we understand exactly what's going to happen, what the consequences are going to be of passing this. And again, I say that, fully supporting it.
Susan or Phil, I don't know if you want to start. I just want to note that our town clerk is taking a much deserved vacation this week, or for part of the week, so she's not here this evening to answer any specific questions from her perspective.
I'll second that she needs it. It's a well-deserved vacation. My goodness.
Susan, there are several questions here. You want to start, because I know you know the answers.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a crack at it if I remember all of them. The first one was if this would allow these non-citizen voters to run and be elected to town meeting and to other town offices. And since our charter says that voter is eligible for these things, the answer to that is yes. They would be and also be appointed to, again, local office only. The second question was about I think the second question kind of runs into the third question, which is, you know, more of the details about how the non-citizens would be registered and what the process for registration would be and how long, you know, someone had to be resident in town. I believe that the process for citizens is that if you are present in town and with the intention of staying, then you may be registered here. So I would presume that, you know, I'm presuming that that would be the same for the non-citizens being registered to vote. However, a lot of these things are details that do need to be worked out. And other towns have filed petitions similar to this, and the legislature has not acted on any of them. And we anticipate that this one will not be acted on immediately either. That the legislature understands that some of the rules about how town clerks administer elections would need to be changed, so that we'd have to be state legislation to change some of the the laws and the regulations on how the town, how town clerks administer elections, administer voting rolls, you know, the list of registered voters, as well as the elections themselves. And there is a bill in, in the legislature filed in both houses to amend the state election law, which is Chapter 51, I believe, to create a local option for cities and towns who want to do this. And also make the changes that are necessary to run this kind of non-citizen voting. So there are a number of unknowns, and it's not really clear how many steps and, and, you know, what the cost, what, how many steps would be required, how much additional time town clerks would have to devote to this, and really how much it would cost. And I understand there is a you know, people want to know what they're getting the town into financially if we do this. And I wish I had a, you know, a better guess than this would all be worked out in the future, but I don't. I would say that there are places that have I would say that there are places that have been doing this for a while in the United States. Some towns near Washington DC, towns in Maryland near Washington DC, and Winuski, Vermont has also recently started. So we'll, we'll begin to get an idea of the cost from those jurisdictions.
I, I'd just like to say that, that the town clerk has written a short memo, and she really clarifies the point that whenever a change like this is made, the Secretary of State passes on guidance to the towns. So it won't be something that, that'll be hit or miss. It'll be something that the Secretary of State standardizes for all those towns that accept the option, which is what we're doing in advance. In terms of the order of magnitude, I think we can't, I, I will look into that, because I think we're going to find that this is not a significant, of course, the word significant means different things, but this is not something that's going to be very expensive. And we will, I, I will get some data to, to share with people on that, from Maryland and from Winuski.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone. There's quite a few questions here in the, in the Q and A, so maybe I'll run through those, and then we can jump back in to see if anybody else has anything. The first one from Stephen McCabe, what is the cost estimate for different ballots? I think Phil, you just answered that you didn't have any data on that currently, correct?
Yeah, I, I think I'll answer if, if that's okay, Phil.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
We don't know, the town clerk does have to print different ballots, or a certain number of different ballots for primaries. So we could, you know, we could try, try to generate some data about that.
Okay. The next question from John Brown, has this been enacted in other Massachusetts municipalities?
Enacted? No.
Not enacted in the sense of, there is no legal authority in, in the state of Massachusetts yet for, for non-US citizens to vote in local elections. However, many communities have filed similar home rule petitions. And the feeling is, and as, as clarified by Senator Jason Lewis, is that the more towns that do this, the more likely it is to happen. So the, the answer is, it's been going, the first town was, I think Cambridge in '04. These, these petitions don't die, they're, they're, they're on the record. And they, they, they tend to have cumulative weight, but, but things don't happen overnight when it comes to legislation in the state.
Great, thank you. The next question from Helen Filio, if someone wants the privilege to vote in this town, why do they not become a citizen?
Well, interesting, this really is one reason the League of Women Voters is so interested in this. It takes typically, even though it can, there will be exceptions, but unless you're married to an American, and it can take 10 to 15 years, about 12 on average, to become a citizen. It turns out that a lot of the, the first, the first, if you're, if you came to Winchester a couple of years after you moved here, and some come right away. Now, now you're bringing up your kids in a, in a situation where you're not able to vote. And, and one of the things that we've found, not just in the United States, but in other democracies, is that the biggest factor in determining whether people are going to be voters in their adult life is whether they were participated kind of within the voting of their, with their family, with their, with their parents. So we're basically, we're, we're taking away an opportunity for, to do one more citizen-building practice in Winchester, which is allowing kids to, to watch their parents vote as they vote. So it's, it's not a trivial thing to become a US citizen. And also, it turns out that there are real practical reasons why some people aren't, who want to be involved in this community, but are reluctant to give up their, their, become a US citizen. And that, for, for Chinese people, particularly those with aging parents, this is a real issue. Those who became US citizens were not, had to give up their Chinese citizenship, were not allowed to visit their aging and often final days of their parents in China, because they had a US passport. If they had a Chinese passport, they would have been allowed to. So there's some, there are some practical reasons, and of course, other personal reasons why people don't immediately become a cit- a, a citizen when they can. But even if they're really focused on it, it can, it can take, on average, 12 years.
Great, thank you. The next question from Tony Conti, the proponents are offering an article which they know is a futile gesture. Why isn't this a waste of time for town meeting?
I didn't quite get them, excuse me.
Sure, the proponents are offering an article which they know is a futile gesture. Why isn't this a waste of time for town meeting?
I couldn't, I'm not missing, I'm missing the key words of, I get the waste of time idea. What was the, what is it we're offering again?
A futile gesture.
A futile gesture. Well, this is what was said about getting the right for women to vote, or, or blacks to vote, or, or gay marriage. I mean, everything seems futile, most progressive things, and certainly enfranchisement, when you, when you are in the early stages. But as we can see, there's been tremendous amount of activity. If you have the city of Boston, which it looks like it may decide that this is something they want, that brings a lot of, a new, new voices in the legislature. And so this is, this is, you know, every, it's kind of like every vote counts, every town weighing in counts.
I might add, if that's okay, that this is not a futile gesture, because non-citizen voting in local elections was allowed in Massachusetts many, many, many years ago, but originally and up until, I think, the 1820s at some point. And many other democracies allow non-citizens to vote in local elections. So it's, it's not a completely futile gesture.
Thank you. Next question from Stephen McCabe, with only 11 towns slash cities across the country with this in place right now, does it make sense for Winchester to take this on without knowing the potential impact it can have on costs and voter fraud?
Well, in a way, it depends on how you want Winchester to be seen. If you want Winchester to be seen as, as a place that is exceptionally open to the inputs from their non-citizen residents, then, then the fewer people that, the fewer state, the towns that have preceded us, the more exceptional we seem. We're not exceptional in requesting this, even in, in Massachusetts, we'd be, you know, there, there are 10 or 12 that have come before us. But it is happening, and Winuski, you know, Vermont and Montpelier are just two recent ones, just the last year in Vermont. And by the way, it went from not ever happening there to being something that both legislatures supported when the governor vetoed it, because he thought it wasn't good to have some towns with a privilege and others without it. But the Vermont legislature overrode the veto. So something that seems impossible can all of a sudden be something that can get a two-thirds majority in both houses. So you never know what's going to happen, but it certainly isn't futile. And I think it would be something that we should be proud of for trying to be in the vanguard on.
Thank you. And the last one in the Q and A, I think is more of a statement than a question, but I'll, I'll read it. Nonetheless, from Helen Filio, there is a good reason why it takes so long to become a citizen. Okay, with that, I think we've cleared out the Q and A. Patty, I don't know if anybody else has their hand raised on this one?
There is, there's about four candidates.
Okay.
So I'm bringing Candace back in.
Thank you.
Candace, you're in.
All right, thank you. Okay, my question is around, when, when the statement was made that the details were not clear, a, a flag went up for me. So to be asking us to pass something where the details have not been worked out, that's, help me to understand that, please. Do you understand the question is that I, I feel very uncomfortable. Oh, there, there's a lot of laws that are passed, and they figure the courts will, will solve them. I know technology figures that the consumer will work it out. I'm, I get frustrated when they, when something is conceptual, but the details haven't been worked out.
I think, I, I think I, Phil, I think I was the one who said the details. And what I was referring to really was the logistics and the implementation of this. Will be worked out, and that, and Phil, Phil, Phil added to my answer that the Secretary of the Commonwealth will consider and, you know, design regulations and design standards and the process for this to, to be done.
Right, the, the key, the, the key issue, logistical issue, is having a separate voting registration and roster. And, and it turns out that in Winchester in particular, where we have, where we have a tradition of, or a recent tradition even stronger, of not having our local voting when we have our state and federal, this is, becomes pretty easy to manage. You have, you have a, you're either on the, on the non-citizen roster, or you're on the citizen roster. And, and, and it, and you, you can only vote locally in that, in the, in the gymnasium at that time of year. So it's not, it just, this does not have to be, you know, whethers it will, whethers away. And it turns out that we have plenty of examples of this being something that's been, it already tackled and, without, without mishap.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I want to Bill, I bring in Bill McPadden.
Thanks, Patty. Go ahead, Bill.
Hi, hi, thank you. And interesting article, article topic, and, yeah, big topic at the national level. I, I think Candace just hit a little bit, what my first question was, is, you know, how has this been harmonized with the other 12 communities in Massachusetts? You know, are there 13 different ways that people are thinking about doing it? So I guess the, the answer, maybe you can confirm for me, is, you know, push this through, and then we'll wait and say what the state says, and then do some type of reconciliation? Is that the thought here?
I think there'd be a little reconciliation, because there usually is. And, but in turn, basically, everyone is agreed that, that in, that these are legal residents only. Why did they get away from the whole immigration issue, which is so politically fraught and, and tends to be partisan? So this is really just people who have green cards or, or working visas. So that, that's, and that's something that all the communities have, have agreed is, is the realistic way to go. So I don't think there, I think that's the main, the main thing they speak to. You know, some bills, when you, when they get into voting bills, that Congress, you know, somebody could say, well, we're going to raise the, we're going to lower the age, or we're going to do something else. But in terms of the whole non-citizen, there, there seems to be a consensus that being a resident, a legal resident, and being a legal citizen, I mean, excuse me, a, a legal resident, so you, you're documented, that those are, those are the, those are the key things. You're documented and you're, you have residency.
Okay, and so this is a home rule petition. So if you play a scenario out where, let's take a school, and we get money, help support from the state, or maybe there's federal money in there. Would, would there be, you know, articles that these folks at the local level would then be allowed to vote on? Because the, the funding's coming from, like in the States, right, US doesn't allow this type of voting. Massachusetts is allowing it from a home rule perspective, but not a state level. So is that like a little sticky wicket in the whole thing?
There, there is no federal prohibition against local voting at, at the state or local level. And, and we're talking about only local, if it's local disposition of funds, the source isn't, isn't relevant. Unless, unless the source, you know, were to put some, some constraints on it. But that's not, you know, that, you can, you can speculate, but that doesn't seem likely.
Yeah, okay, well, no, I, I appreciate that. I guess it's a matter of losing power at times. Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I believe there's three people left with their hands up, and I'm going to keep it to those three in the interest of moving dialogue along. I know this is obviously one that's going to, I'm sure have a lot of debate on the floor of town meeting, and there's a, as I said, a information in the League of Women Voters. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of dialogue before we get to the floor of town meeting. So Helen Filio, you're up next.
I fully appreciate the value of being a citizen and having the right to vote. I have a multicultural family, and I'm well aware of this. However, if you have somebody who wants to have the ability to vote, why don't you put your energy toward helping the people become citizens instead of this way? That's just like carte blanche. If they're citizens, I know it's lengthy, and I know it's expensive, but help them with the money. Help them do the, do the proper vetting. There is a reason for, for this, these laws to be in place. And I would like to see something more positive than just giving away the privilege to vote. No other country in the world does that.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Helen. I think the goal tonight is not to have debate regarding the issues.
No, no, I'm sorry.
It's really just to ask questions of the proponents. So I, I'm going to say that that's probably more of a, a debate-type statement.
That's okay.
If, if you don't mind, we'll keep that kind of dialogue until we get to the floor of town meeting.
I listened to the, to the, the presentation last night, and I, it was very interesting.
Okay, thank you, Helen. The next up?
Sally Dale.
Go ahead, Sally.
I, I don't believe that I raised my hand.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
We'll go to the next, thank you. Is there anyone else, Patty? Go ahead, Pat Gil, go ahead, thank you.
Yes. Of the other towns or cities that are also putting this forward, have any of the other towns decided to have tax-paying businesses lumped in with the taxpayers of non-residents to vote? Has any other, or is all the warrants basically the same? Or has anyone else done that? And if not, have you guys thought about that? Because, you know, the businesses also have a large influence in our town, and it matters about the schools and the decisions that are made in the town about their businesses. So if you, if we're using the same philosophy of, well, they pay taxes in town, why didn't we consider using businesses as well?
Actually, it's interesting you say that. In Connecticut, that is, that is something that is practiced. I think, I think our town clerk, one reason she has experienced managing a separate register is because they do permit, I don't know if it's every town, but in some towns at least, to allow citizen, who, excuse me, taxpayers who live in other communities be involved, at least in some of the town decisions. It turns out that in Winchester, we have some, we will affect some of the business owners, because they're, they're, they're residents and non-citizens. So we, we, you know, we're, we're, that, that's our focus, and that's, and it's more immigrant justice and, 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 and that's why we proposed this article. Doesn't mean the other ideas aren't good.
Thank you. So we have just a few questions, two questions I'll take out of the Q and A, and then we'll wrap it up on Article E. The first one from Carol Savage, can you explain what is meant by the amendments language by the select board?
Phil, you want me to?
Yeah.
Take a crack at that? As this was being developed, this is, I think, standard to have in a, an authorization for a home rule petition, just to be sure that if there's some technical change that has to be made to accomplish the goal of the petition, that we don't have to come back to town meeting, that, that, you know, that the select board and town council can, can make that change, make that fix.
Thank you. And a question from Bob Stone, can non-citizens now participate in town meeting and promote local rules, even if they don't have the vote?
I believe they have. That's a good question, and I'm just kind of off the top of my head, as a town meeting member and resident and former member of the select board. I believe a resident can be given the permission to speak, and I don't think there's any under the charter. I'd have to go back and look, but I, I think that's what the wording is. And that wouldn't preclude a non, a non-citizen from speaking if they're, they are a resident and they're at a town meeting and want to weigh in.
Thank you. And just a follow-up from Mr. Stone. I'm concerned the word legal can be changed as it pertains to non-citizens. I don't know if that has any impact on anything included here in the language, but Susan or Phil, if you want to address that.
My, my understanding is that all of the home rule, proposed home rule petitions have been drafted in this way and that this would be the most would be the way to ensure that legal, you know, that, that this is not going to cause problems and make people feel that the election, elective process is being tampered with, or people are voting illegally or here illegally. That we, we just want to have it very clearly defined that it is limited to legal citizens and, you know, all, all of these cities and, and towns have town council or city council or, you know, legal advice. And this is just the way that seems the safest to ensure the integrity of, of our election, of our elective process.
Thank you. Okay. I think that's all we have for Article eight this evening. I will move on to Article nine. Thank you Susan and Phil for your participation there. Article nine is a majority vote. This item is on the consent agenda. This is an article to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash or other available funds, money to pay bills incurred in prior fiscal years. There are no such bills this year, so we will be indefinitely postponing this article. Article 10, this is a majority vote on the consent agenda. The proponent is the town manager. And this is to transfer, excuse me, appropriate $12,000 from the parking meter fund to the town center parking account for operating expenses and all other costs associated with the collection enforcement of parking ticket revenue. Any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to Article 11. Article 11 is a majority vote, also on consent agenda. And this is to hear the report of the capital planning committee. Article 12, this is a two-thirds vote, also on the consent agenda and the component is the capital planning committee. This article is to transfer, excuse me, there's, there's two motions under this article. The first motion is to transfer a sum of 27, 278845 cents from town hall flooring to the building stabilization fund. And the second motion is to appropriate a sum of $10,130 from the DPW four-by-four truck to the capital stabilization fund. And questions on this article? Okay, we'll move on to Article 13. Article 13 is to appropriate a sum of $470,000 to pay for engineering and other costs related to development of plans and specifications for the repair, reconstruction, and improvement of the South Reservoir Dam. This is a continuation of article that was approved at the fall town meeting where we, we funded about $72,000 to complete a feasibility study for repairs to the dam. This is the next phase of that and then we'll be back at a future town meeting to request the construction funding. The proponent is the capital planning committee and I'm happy to open the floor for any questions on this one. I believe there's members of the capital planning committee here, so I'm sure they, they're happy to help answer any questions we may have. Okay, nothing there. So we'll move on to Article 14. Article 14 is a two-thirds vote. The component is the capital planning committee. And this is to appropriate $600,000 for the lead service water line replacement program to reduce the potential for elevated level, lead levels at customer taps and to maintain high quality, water quality conditions, including the replacement of lead neck connections and the replacement or rehabilitation of water service lines containing lead. This is year five of a multi-year program where we've been slowly chipping away at the removal of all the lead containing lead necks and lead service lines we have in our town. Any questions on this one? Okay, we'll move on to Article 15. This is a two-thirds vote. The proponent is the capital planning committee. This is to appropriate $90,000 for the Main Street Bridge railing replacement, bridge railing for replacement or repair to the concrete rails and all their costs associated. This is being funded through a variety of sources. First is from just over, excuse me, $11,234.90, 92 cents from free cash, $35,000 from the capital stabilization funds, and $43,765.08 from surpluses from the following prior capital accounts. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to Article 16. This is a majority vote. The proponent is the town manager. And this is to appropriate $382,215.22 for the East Side Project One Sanitary Sewer Evaluation to repair structural defects identified as part of the prior sanitary sewer evaluation for this design area. This includes engineering, design and construction funds. This is being funded through the use of unexpended existing M2B balances as set forth in the table below. Any questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. We are in Article 17. This is a majority vote. The proponent is the select board. And this is for the town to appropriate $45,000 from free cash for the replacement of a fire department's compressor and filling station for the self-contained breathing apparatus and all other costs related thereto. This is a critical piece of equipment for our fire department and it is now old enough that they are no longer to obtain critical parts for service and they can't repair the system as is. We did receive a $19,000 grant that's being used, applied to the, towards the cost of the purchase of this equipment and asking for the remainder to be paid from free cash. Any questions on this one? Okay, Article 18, this is a majority vote. The proponent is the finance, excuse me, the proponent is the select board. That's a typo on the, on the slide, here, not the finance committee. And this is for the town to appropriate $200,000 from free cash for the construction of a multipurpose sports court at the Mystic School, including engineering services and construction. You may recall there was an appropriation at Fall Town Meeting for the engineering design for that project and we're now wrapping up that design and ready to start construction hopefully later this year. Any questions on this one?
Chris Roger.
Go ahead Roger.
I recall that this is supposed to be self-funding in some way. And can you explain that?
Sure, yeah, the, the Recreation Department has, sorry, just reading the background here to make sure I don't misspeak in place of our recreation director. The Recreation Department has said they expect additional revenue with fee-based programs, rentals and added childcare registrations estimated at $100,000 per year for the Recreation Department's enterprise account. Any, any other questions on that Roger?
Nope.
Thank you.
Candace is up next.
Okay, go ahead Candace.
Do you, do we have some idea of what the, the bottom line is going to cost us on, on this plan?
Well, so that, I believe there was somewhere around $50,000 appropriated at Fall Town Meeting and this request is for $200,000, which will take us through construction. So that, I expect that will be the total cost associated to get the sports court constructed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pamela Court.
Go ahead Pam.
Hi, thank you. There's, in the motion book, there's a discussion of what the anticipated revenue would be. And I was wondering if perhaps, and I know, I don't know if you could answer that tonight, but perhaps by town meeting, if there could be maybe a little bit more clarity on that, where they expect the revenue to come from, how they intend to charge for the use of it. Just so that's a, a little bit more clear and less nebulous when, when we're trying to make a decision. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I think, and I think there's, there, from the background, it says fee-based programs, rentals and added childcare registrations. But I'm happy to get some more detail from the recreation director. Any other questions on this one?
None.
Okay, great, thank you. We will move on to Article 19. Article 19 is a majority vote. This is a, the proponent is jointly sponsored from the town manager and the finance committee. And this is to transfer, vote to transfer from free cash, money to supplement or reduce appropriations previously voted for the FY22 budgets. So there's seven motions being proposed under this article. The first is for the snow and ice budget. The second is for the, excuse me. The first is for the snow and ice personnel services budget. The second is for the snow and ice equipment budgets. There's two related to snow and ice. Motion three is related to a free cash request for the Public Works Maintenance Personal Services Budget. Motion four is free cash for the Public Works Buildings Personal Services Budget. Motion five is for $54,000 from free cash and $52,500 from the Water and Sewer Routines earnings to replenish the FY22 Reserve Fund bound, Reserve Fund Budget. Motion six is for $1,000 from free cash for the Planning Board Personal Services Budget. And motion seven is for free cash to replenish the FY22 or to augment the FY22 legal expense budget. I can take any questions on this one?
Roger.
Go ahead Roger.
So my question is why these things aren't in the FinCom reserve rather than appropriating free cash?
So usually when we get this close to town meeting, the finance committee prefers things to go be appropriated at town meeting as opposed to drawing down their reserve account. And you can actually see in Mark, in motion five, we are replenishing their reserve funds to ensure that they have enough money to get through the end of the year. Any further questions on this one? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to Article 20. This is a majority vote on the consent agenda and the proponent is the select board. This is to appropriate $70,000 from free cash to supplement the Eversource account for the purposes of engineering and other consulting services related to construction of the Eversource 345 KV line. This is, folks may recall, we had a similar article at Fall Town Meeting. We have an agreement with Eversource for them to pay for a field engineer to help oversee the project on the town's behalf for, for the construction of the Eversource 345 KV line. This is reimbursable. So the town, although we do have to enter into the contract with the field engineer, we are reimbursed by Eversource from time to time over the course of the year and that money will go back to the general funds. Any questions on this one? Right? Article 21, Article 21 is a majority vote and the proponent is the select board. This is for the town to amend the water and sewer rates currently in effect in accordance with Chapter seven, section three of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws. And this is for the bills or consumption on or after March 1st of 2022. This is a, represents a rate increase of 3.5%, which was approved by the select board at a meeting earlier in March. Any questions on this one?
Yes, Carol Savage.
Hi, thank you. So this is, I have a question on this one and I think this has come up the past couple of town meetings where we've raised the water and sewer rates. I, I would like to see the history of where the rates have been over the last five years and a projection, and at, at least so we can see, we, I think we've done a fair amount of raises over the last few years. So if we could see the last five-year rates on a slide at town meeting, that would be very helpful. And then also, I know it's been requested by a couple of town meeting members to see some of the financials of this department. Revenue and expenses outlined a bit because there's the rainy season and the dry season and the impact that has on revenues. And I know there's a target stabilization fund number, but I think it would be very helpful to have some transparency on this budget. Because there has, town meeting has approved these rate increases and to be able to see where it's going would be helpful and understand what, if anything, is being done for the infrastructure. I know how much of this rate increase is going to operating expenses versus maybe a reserve fund for infrastructure improvements?
Sure. So there, there was a report done for Fall Town Meeting that does kind of a deep dive into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. That report is available both on the town meeting website under the Fall Town Meeting and also on the DPW's website.
And that has revenue and expense?
It has kind of a history of kind of looking at some of the financials over the past, not sure if it's five years, but there is, there is quite a bit of information in there that we did put together.
Okay.
With our consultant who helps us put these together. So yeah.
That was.
That was at Fall Town Meeting, yeah.
So I mean, my rec, I'll look at it again, but I recollect that what came at Fall Town Meeting wasn't the level of detail that I was looking for, but I will look again and I will let you know if.
Yeah, that would be great. You and I can talk offline about that Carol. Thank you. Any other questions on this one?
Roger has a question.
Go ahead Roger.
The, is the service charge unchanged?
Yes, the service charge is unchanged.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
There is not.
Thanks Patty. Go on to Article 22. This is a majority vote, consent agenda. The proponent is the town manager and this is to appropriate $216,842 from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund to be used for PEG access service programming, monitoring the cable operator's compliance with the franchise agreement and to prepare for renewal of the cable franchise license, including any expert in legal services. Any questions on this one? This is a standard article, happens every year. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to Article, Articles 23, 24 and 25 are budget-related and those are sponsored by the finance committee. It's my understanding that the finance committee would be holding a separate hearing on another article, so there'll be no discussion of those articles this evening. And then the next two are kind of a special case. So this is Article 26 and 27 and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the slides for both of these together. And then I'm gonna let the spokesperson from the proponent for the, from the Educational Facilities Planning and Building Committee, the EFPC, provide a, a general statement and then we can get into any questions and answers on this one. So Article 26 is a two-thirds vote. And again, it's a proponent is the EFPC. This is to appropriate $5.98 million to pay costs of the design, construction and renovation of the Sandborne Carriage House for the purposes of accommodating the relocation of the Winchester Public School Administration slash central office from the Parker School as outlined in Article 28 of the 2021 Fall Town Meeting. And the Winchester Public Schools 10-Year Facilities Master Plan approved July 2017 and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Article 27 is a majority vote and the proponent of this one is also the EFPC. This is to appropriate $169,750 to pay for the design and engineering services for the development of plans and specifications to make improvements and alterations to the Parker School in preparation for its use as temporary educational swing space to accommodate the development of the Lynch School, Lynch Elementary School project and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And so with that, I see both Jay Nardone and Chris Nixon here on behalf of the EFPC and I'll let one or both of you take over if you could just give us maybe a 30-second to a minute kind of overview of these two articles. I suspect this was one that we're probably going to have quite a few questions on. So I ask that people, again, just limit, limit your discussion to questions as opposed to kind of a debate type of statement at this point. We're really here just to try to help inform people as much as we can. And depending on the number of people that we have questions, I may limit the overall number just kind of to make sure we're not here super late this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jay and Chris to start it off.
Okay, thank you. Article 26 is to redo the carriage house. Desperate need a repair to move in central offices. Most importantly is to vacate Packers like its reeds so that we can vacate the Lynch School completely for the renovations as a swing space. This is not something new. I know it's, it's coming up as if it's been just sprung on everyone. But as far back as the Ambrose, it's been in the works to, items were done at the Ambrose to, to prepare the carriage house for this central office. And then again, it was brought up in the 10-year master plan. So it's been in the works. It's just been, we've been dealing with MSBA as their timeframe as when things could happen and the schedule and. Just we're open for questions, I guess.
Great, thank you. Chris, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure, I guess what I'd like to just take an opportunity and share with those watching tonight that. And I appreciate you sort of cycling between the two. Articles twenty-six and twenty-seven are very much related to one another. The EF PVC's responsibility when we manage a construction project is to determine first, do we need swing space? Yes or no? If yes, how much swing space do we need? And then where can it go and how would that work? So we determined that we needed a minimum of two grade levels to come off site at Lynch. And those kids, of course, need a cafeteria, gymnasium, art, music, library. So the obvious opportunity was Parkhurst. Parkhurst has been used to swing space before for the Vincent Owen construction for Ambrose. And even we sent about half the Lincoln School kids there back in, I think, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand. So it's really well suited to be used as swing space. However, in the past month, what has become clear is the there was strong interest on the part of the school committee. And particularly Dr. Hackett heard from parents and teachers in Lynch community at getting all of the students off site. And what we learned from both the architect and the OPM on this project is if we could get all of the kids off site. To build the new Lynch, we could cut the overall project schedule by ten months. We could save over a million dollars in general conditions alone. There's some substantial risk avoidance, of course, in doing this and Jay has done a great job sort of explaining to the school committee that we expect to get many more qualified bidders. Who don't have to deal with the hassle of an occupied site. So the challenge then is we can't fit all of the Lynch kids into Parkhurst. We know that it's not big enough. So article twenty-six, while it seeks the funding to renovate the carriage house so we can move central office into that building and free up Parkhurst. Article twenty-seven seeks about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars strictly for design services for a design and procurement package for modular classrooms. Because we're gonna need some supplemental temporary space. The the dollars we're asking for under article twenty-six are not eligible to be rolled into the Lynch project. The dollars we're asking for under article twenty-seven are eligible. They are not reimbursable, but they're eligible to be rolled into the overall project. We want to be clear tonight, however, that the reason we're only asking for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is. The cost for actual procurement and installation of the modular classrooms, as well as any site utility work that's necessary would be rolled into the overall project. Here's the interesting wrinkle. If article twenty-six should pass. Then the design and procurement package that we request under article twenty-seven seeks to bring eight modular classrooms onto the Parkhurst site. If article twenty-six should fail. Then we're still seeking the same amount of money to put together a design and procurement package. However, it's for sixteen modular classrooms and site modifications, including parking and so forth. Because we're gonna need more temporary space so that we can get all those kids off site. So this is a little bit of choose your own adventure for town meeting. The EF PBC did not want to bring forward just one option to town meeting and say. It's our way or the highway. There's definitely a preferred option. It does include renovating the carriage house. If town meeting should not support that, we have a backup plan. And the last point I think we should make Jay is that. Although I think most town meeting members are well aware, we'll be coming in the fall with the project funding agreement for the overall project. And we plan on a January debt exclusion override. The reason that the project team, including the architect and the OPM, wanted us to bring this to spring town meeting. Is the the lead time for things like modular classrooms that it could be quite lengthy. And there was concern that if we wait until fall to ask for this, we are not going to be able to have students off site by the fall of twenty-three and time for construction. So this would impact their school year. If we don't pass something in the spring, we're moving kids off site in the middle of the school year and could possibly impact the eventual substantial completion date. As well, so we thought this was a good item to bring forward to try to manage the schedule as best we can. This is think of this as an early enabling package that we'd like to get started on.
Great, thank you, Chris and Jay. Do we have questions on? I'm gonna take questions on article twenty-six and twenty-seven together because they do. Kind of seem to come as a pair here, so I'll open up the floor. Helen, Dylan, you're up first.
I would like to ask the funding source. I know it's a debt exclusion override question, but apparently how much are you gonna be asking for? Chris?
I don't understand that this is a debt exclusion override question.
How much money are you gonna ask for in a debt exclusion override?
We're not asking for a debt exclusion override that would.
How are you gonna fund this six million dollars?
So that's a good question.
Thank you.
So the debt service, so six million dollars bonded over, you know, either current or projected interest rates in between, let's say, four and four and a half percent. Management has been getting some feedback from Hilltop on this. And I may ask Beth to correct me, but it's somewhere on the order of between like four hundred and forty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, something like that. We all know interest rates are going up. So the the question is, you know, we we can certainly go out and bond the work. The bigger question is, so then how do you pay the bonds?
That's right.
We we do not expect, we would not be receiving invoices for this work, Helen, until after mid-July. So we would not be receiving invoices until FY twenty-three. Our understanding is that if we were to bond the project, then payments would not be due until FY twenty-four. Jay has done, I think, a good job being clear with the school committee. The EF PVC's expectation is that once Parkhurst is vacant in in, let's say, June of twenty-five. And we would expect to take some time to get educational technology and equipment out of the building and so forth. The building will be vacant and available for rental in the fall of twenty-five. Dr. Hackett has also made clear that there is no, he has no planned district use for the building. And as you may know, Helen, from our master plan. We don't have a use for the building once we're done with it for swing space. So Parkhurst is about thirty thousand square feet, certainly has a lot of value for rental revenue. The challenge we have is that even though Parkhurst might be available to rent in, let's say, September of twenty-five. If we were to rent that building for, let's say, ten months of that fiscal year, because September of twenty-five is actually FY twenty-six. We collect those dollars, but they're not actually available for the town to use until FY twenty-seven. Which of course is Jan, is July first. So the challenge is how do we sort of fund this work in the interim? Some years ago, town meeting funded our all-day kindergarten ask with the understanding that we had to wait a year to get increased funding through chapter seventy. This is sort of similar, except it's not a year, it's more like three. So the expectation would be that through the operating budget would have to help us kind of carry the cost for this in the interim, whether that would be a permanent bond. Or a bond anticipation note. Earlier today, the Disability Access Commission actually voted to allocate. Twenty-five thousand dollars from their resources, which are capital dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. To help towards that cause. I think if we went with a bond anticipation note, and again, I would defer to Beth. Those costs would be closer to like two-ten or two-thirty a year. The challenge, of course, is with interest rates going up. Don't know that that would be really the smart way to go. That would be kind of like going out for an adjustable rate mortgage right now. And if you're reading the papers, why would you do that? So I I think what we're struggling with here, Helen, is that so there's a long-term view here. About making an investment in the carriage house and getting a permanent home. What after which we would expect no significant renewal or replacement cost for twenty or twenty-five years. We free up an incredibly valuable resource in Parkhurst that we can start pulling revenue from. And Jay has, you know, been very clear as well with the school committee that. If in some universe, we we were unable to find interested tenants, we don't believe that that would be the case. That we'd have to actually seriously consider selling the building. The school committee's preference, of course, is not to do that. The committee would prefer to hang on to it and rent the building. But the assessed value of Parkhurst is Jay, I think it's up near twelve million dollars or something.
Exactly, yes, correct.
So so the the master plan, Helen specifically says the school site that we really need to hang on to long term is actually Mystic. Because if we should ever see explosive growth in enrollment again, like we've seen in the past. Geographically Mystic is where we would build another elementary school. And so for the inverse reason, Parkhurst is not a site that we've said we have any long-term interest in because, you know, when the leaves are off the trees, if you stand at the right place, you can see Ambrose. It's just too close. So we feel like long-term, there's revenue generation potential there to cover the debt service. The the tougher problem is what do we do sort of in the short term? And is that is is that juice worth the squeeze?
Thanks, Chris. Helen, I just wanted to make a few notes on what the financial piece that Chris had noted. So we evaluated two options for the select board. One is to have a series of band payments and with bands being issued in July. First of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five and one to do a permanent borrowing on July one. As Chris said, we would have band payments somewhere around two-ten to two-forty in those first two fiscal years. But as you get into the third and fourth year, you're also required to do a pay down. So those those payments in the the third and fourth year would be close, would be over four hundred thousand dollars. And then I also just wanted to mention in the. In this scenario, we do the permanent borrow on July first. We would have an interest-only payment on January first of twenty twenty-three of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And then we would start the actual. Pay the payments in FY twenty-four of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Just to clarify a few of those financial pieces there.
Beth?
Yep.
Could I ask Chris to to share with the people watching, how many employees will be using the carriage house? How many people we're talking about?
Sure, Helen, so and I I think we. I think this this question was asked in the fall too, and it's it's a good one, it's a good reminder. So at at fall town meeting. We we requested money to take the schematic designs for the carriage house one step further. That was estimated at five point nine five million dollars. And with all this extra work, the design team has come in with an estimate at five point nine eight, so we feel really good about that that figure. And similarly, it's it's designed to accommodate, I think it's seventeen permanent employees. There are some additional spots there for floaters. We have some folks, Helen, who maybe work at central office on a Tuesday, Thursday, and they're in the schools Monday, Wednesday, Friday and vice versa. So there's some expansion capability that's actually built into the building as well.
Appreciate that, Chris.
Yeah.
Okay, we have one question in the Q and A. From Stephen McCabe, is there a reason that the school administrators can't work at town hall with the space available there or work from home?
Well, I would, so this is again, this is a question that may come up on the floor of town meeting. And and Dr. Hackett, of course, would be with us and able to address that more directly. To the town hall piece, I guess I'm not sure how to how to answer that. I I don't know how we could accommodate central office at town hall. I don't know that that would work. I don't know how that would work. So I guess it's hard for me to sort of give an answer with respect from working from home. And again, I asked Jay to help me out on this because I know others have asked Frank this in other meetings. Our central office team, they really do actually work as a team. Addressing many sort of complex issues throughout the day. We've got a number of meetings that happen throughout the day with with parents involving children, whether it's, you know, special needs or some contracted services. You may have the assistant superintendent, the superintendent dealing with a financial issue. They need to meet with the director of finance and may have some staff members from town hall coming over and vice versa. So physically, I mean, they simply, they work a lot together. And I think it's a very high functioning team when they're working together. I think, though, it's just as a more practical matter, this idea of working from home, I think it's a good question because certainly. You know, corporate America is never gonna sort of get back to the way they were. And I think what we're hearing in the corporate world is employees are saying, look, if you want me to come back into the office, I'll do it, but it needs to be meaningful. If I'm getting the same work done from home, I'm getting done at the office, why do I need to do that? And that's a really fair point. To this issue of working from home. How would we, how would we sort of prepare for that? What accommodations do we need to make for that? What technology do we need to invest in to make that happen? Do our employees even have the space and the resources to make that work to begin with? And how would we compensate them for that? Our employees are many, many miles apart. Some of them have forty-minute commutes or greater, so I'm 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 struggling with how that would actually work. But I would just say related related to this, if I may, Beth, one of the questions I know that has come up is. If for any reason, given the impact that COVID has had, which we've all read about on supply chain. And if you have a long lead item that kind of holds up the final completion of the carriage house and let's say. The elevator's not running and you can't get everybody in on the second floor, what would you do? Dr. Hackett has already identified that one of the modular classrooms at Ambrose is currently being used for offices. He believes that would still be the case, just given what enrollment looks like at Ambrose in particular. And if we needed to move, you know, half the folks. Into or some of the folks anyway, into one of those classrooms, you know, for a month or what have you, while we're finishing up the carriage house. We could certainly do that. We're just gonna have to be flexible when we're further down the road and understand whether that's necessary. But the appeal, of course, is we'd have everybody basically on site. Those modulars at Ambrose are just a few steps away from the carriage house. That's a little clunky, but I think that's the best answer I can give. I don't know if Jay has anything else he could add to that.
Chris, you're exactly right. I I think people have to realize when they visit central office or. The way the system is, there's still paper files, this, you know, the basement is full of paper files. You could be going there to looking for a record, you could be interacting. The whole office there works as one. I just couldn't see it split up and dispersed out all over the place and trying to interact. When a parent comes with an issue that they want to talk to superintendent, they want to talk to different people. Really has to be together.
Sorry, is on mute there? Patty, can we can we bring the next person in from the queue?
Yes, Pam.
Thank you. Go ahead, Pamela.
Hi, thank you. I have a few questions. Can you talk a little bit about the timeframe of when we would need to move kids into Parkhurst? I have a number of questions, so I apologize and I hope that you can keep them clear, Chris. You're very good at that. What's the timeframe of moving them into Parkhurst? And being able to find space for our administrators? I was a little bit confused about the two options that were presented, one where we would need eight modular classrooms. And one where we would need sixteen modular classrooms. If you could maybe clarify what that is. And if there aren't other options available such as rental space somewhere else in town. For the administrators, for the duration of the time that that Parkhurst would need to be used for swing space. Because that's that's not entirely clear to me either. Thank you.
I'm I'm happy to address that, Beth. Again, ask Jay to weigh in here if I miss anything. So a timeline has been developed for the project, Pam. The goal is to have the carriage house complete and available for move-in by central office by mid-June twenty twenty-three. And this would allow the Parker School to be vacated at the end of the school year in twenty-three to be prepared for swing space for the Lynch kids relocating there. So to achieve these milestone dates, the carriage house design work would basically commence. In early June or late May following town meeting. Bidding would be anticipated as early as October of twenty-two. That would allow a contractor to be engaged and on-site before the end of twenty twenty-two. That would allow at least six months of construction. And to complete the work by the middle of June twenty twenty-three. And I would just add, you know, Dr. Hackett pointed out earlier today that, you know, if if necessary, remember, Ambrose is gonna be vacated during the summer because obviously school's out. And if we needed to just use a couple of classrooms, even if it's just to sort of store materials, records, what have you. If we needed to get out of Parkhurst extra, extra quickly, you know, he would certainly be willing to make that happen so that Parkhurst, you know, would be available. So I hope that answers your first question about phasing. Oh, and then I'm sorry, you had a question about the modulars, so.
I do, and I I apologize. I also have a question about maintenance because you had mentioned that you don't anticipate any maintenance expenses for twenty-five years. And I I'm kind of curious whether that's realistic or not.
No, that's so, thank you. If if I said that, I chose my words poorly. What we're talking about there is like renewal and replacement costs associated with capital. So that's things like replacement windows, replacement, you know, roof usually lasts twenty or twenty-five years, maybe thirty. So it's really about the major building envelope components, you know, pumps that wear out boilers and so forth. So it's that kind of stuff. Certainly, yes, you'd be maintaining the building on a regular basis, so I'm sorry if if I misspoke. So the 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 original goal. Was to minimize the amount of swing space on this project, Pam, because swing space, although the MSBA. Allows it to be included in the overall project funding agreement, it is not reimbursable at all. And so we were trying to minimize that, I think, for good reason. The EF PBC was very clear with the school committee and with the community, I think, at our kickoff meeting back in November. I think at our kickoff meeting back in November, that that was the goal. However, it was literally, I think, a month ago that when the school committee, I think, had a greater view of the project, Jay and the architect came to the school committee, presented it, and really walked them through the schedule. The committee, I think, really understood just very recently that without moving everyone offsite, yes, we could get a new Lynch school complete by the fall of '25, meaning the building is there, the doors are open for kids. But a substantial portion of the 1960s school would still be sitting there. It needs to be abated, it needs to be demolished, all the site work needs to be completed, roadways, parking, et cetera. And so that work would continue into the spring of '26. And so given some of the concern we've heard from the community around that kind of activity happening on an occupied school site, there was strong interest in trying to find a way to get everybody offsite. Although that comes with a cost, Pam, there are some significant offsets. And so there's a strong feeling we would come close to, if not make that up entirely, both in savings and in cost avoidance. So to make this happen, to get to your question about modulators, we need, the design team has determined, we need eight modular classrooms. They would be located up at Parkhurst, kind of 90 degrees to the ones that are there now, like where we meet for school committee. I know you're familiar with those rooms. It would require some modification to the existing parking lot and some small supplemental parking in that little peewee field above. If Article 26 fails and there is no renovation of the carriage house, then central office would stay on site and we would need more modular classrooms. But Dr. Hackett has been clear that he's willing to be kind of creative in where his staff go on site. One option might even be to, do we actually maybe bring some more kids into the building and find a way to put administrators in some of those modular rooms? We need to be kind of thoughtful about how that might look and be clear with the MSBA that that might be our plan. The MSBA really does not reimburse, you know, for central office, they'll reimburse space for kids. But we're hopeful that if we said, look, we're going to bring on these modular classrooms and they're for the kids. But if we can just let the administrators pack into this space, we can let the kids be in the building. We might actually find a better utilization of space, if that makes sense. I think that's a really good idea on his part. Jay, did I miss anything?
No, but I could add, Chris, to the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance will be less expensive in the carriage house for a brand new, energy efficient building, rather than the maintenance that it's costing and energy used at the Parker's for central office, where they're just spread amongst the second floor of the building there.
That's a really good point. So central office, you know, when central office moved to Parkhurst in 2013, they moved there from Lynch. And they moved from Lynch because we were so short of space there. So the Vincent Owen Project, although it was a much larger school to accommodate our explosive enrollment growth, that's not the only relief valve there was. So we actually moved central office out of Lynch and then we basically put all that space back to instructional space, which is what it had once been. Ironically, when central office moved to Parkhurst, there was a lot of concern about this, even from members of the finance committee, because we only needed about 6,500 or maybe 7,000 square feet. But Parkhurst is 30,000 square feet. So there was, they were looking for a commitment that central office, in fact, would not be at Parkhurst forever. And we said, no, we said it's going to be at least three years and hopefully not more than 10. And that was back in, you know, 2013, and here we are in 2022.
Great, thanks, Chris. I'm going to take the three questions we have in the Q and A. First is from Carol Savage. Fall town meeting asked questions about the possibility of temporary rental space for central office. This question will come up again. Has there been any further analysis of that? And if so, what can you share?
So thank you, and I apologize. I think Pam had asked about that as well. So yes, in the fall, our former finance director, John Denizio, who was helping us with some transition with Dr. Hackett into the district, actually went back out, did a market survey, worked with Cushman and Wakefield and a commercial real estate broker. We could not find any rental space in Winchester proper that suited our needs, particularly just in terms of size, but other attributes like ADA accessibility, parking and so forth. But that didn't mean we sort of stopped. What we said was, is okay, if there's nothing in Winchester proper, is there something else nearby, whether that's, you know, Woburn or Burlington? There's obviously a lot of commercial property along 128. And so back in the fall, the information we received was that we should assume our budget for, again, not present day, but when we would need it in about a year or more away, we should assume about $33 a foot. There's also movement, there are moving costs, there's fit up FF and E costs, technology costs, digital records management costs, offsite, you know, records management and so forth. So we actually kind of developed a detailed accounting of that. And we actually determined that the cost of having them offsite for two years could be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think it was 650 to upwards of $700,000. That's a lot of money. So more recently, since town meeting did give us the money to take the schematic design to the design development level and actually do the engineering work. We do have a member of the EFPBC who works in the commercial real estate space who has shared with us the most recent market report from Jones Lang LaSalle. It backs up the Cushman and Wakefield numbers at $33 a foot. I should say, there may well be other properties, you know, again, not necessarily in Winchester, but nearby, that might be less than that. But we need to underscore that the central office of the Winchester Public Schools is a public body. We are required to be in accessible space. Parkhurst is already now a fully, nearly fully accessible building. It's not a private entity. We have to be in fully accessible space. So got to have the right space, the right size, got to have the parking, you got to have accessible routes and accessible spaces for it to work. And so we think that's a good number to budget for. So basically, you could say $650,000 to $700,000 for a couple of years. Interestingly though, Carol, so that number, compare that to kind of what I would call that carrying cost for financing. Again, whether it's a ban at like 230 a year or if we're permanently financing the project, that cost for two years is kind of in that ballpark. And of course, just like modular classrooms, if you're renting, you're kind of throwing the money away.
Thanks, Chris. The next question is from Stephen McCabe. The investment in technology and resources would be way less than $6 million. The cost to move paper files is way less than the cost to renovate the carriage house.
So I'm not sure what the question is there, but I would, it prompts me to say, town meeting did support a capital request from Mary Ellen Lannan for digital records management, kind of a, I'm going to stumble through this, Beth, almost like a strategic plan. So we were going to bring a consultant onboard. That did not include work with the schools, but that is something that Dr. Hackett is certainly interested in doing so we can manage our space. What we can tell you is that the architect is confident that the space that's available in the carriage house in the basement is well accommodates the records that we have. We would certainly look to eventually move those somehow offsite in a digital manner, if possible.
Great, thank you. And the last one is from Roger Wilson, more of a comment than a question. I would suggest a critical path type chart to explain the timing of these intertwined projects.
That's a great comment, Beth. We do have a timeline, I think, that speaks to Roger's suggestion. And you put in a plug earlier for the Lynch project website, lynch2025.com. I will let people know we have a page for swing space. There has not been a lot there, simply because so much of this has been in flux, particularly with this interest in getting all the kids offsite. But now that the articles and the motions have been approved and we just sent some background language to management earlier this week, and conversations like this and other questions we've received have been really very helpful and insightful for us. So we're going to work really hard kind of over the next couple of days to start putting this information up there. So I would encourage people to go visit the website to find some of this information. We will absolutely put a Gantt chart of some kind up there, just as Roger suggests.
Great. And a follow up from Carol Savage. Can you confirm the construction timeline for Caritas and what is contingency if it runs behind?
So that it approx, let's say, six to seven months. And again, it depends on what the issue is. I mean, the longest lead item that strikes us would be the elevator. I would never begin to speak for a while, it would be inappropriate. But we have had school projects in the past where we've had some element that has been dragging behind and we've gotten like a conditional occupancy permit. If we were to have trouble with the elevator being complete, we might look to sort of put staff in on the main level, the first floor, and any public facing staff who might be on the second floor would have to be located on the first floor. Again, I go back to that modular classroom building at Ambrose that Dr. Hackett thinks might be available. So Dr. Hackett and his team, I know, are going to be just super flexible and accommodating. It's really just going to be difficult, it will be difficult to know until we're in it if something is looking to sort of jeopardize that final substantial completion. We would just have to react to it as it presents itself to us. But the architect and the project manager feel like, you know, this is a viable timeline.
Great, thank you. Patty, do we have any other people with hands raised?
One more, Pamela just raised her hand.
Okay, go ahead. And I think this will be our last one.
Thank you very much. Chris, one more question. Has anybody done any risk analysis on the potential or other things that may need to be done? For instance, if the stucco siding on the building starts to crumble during construction or mold remediation becomes a little bit of an issue or there's an issue with, say, the foundation? Has anybody looked at that and done some risk analysis for what those potential costs might be?
Thank you for the question. So engineer, not just the architects, but the structural engineers have taken a hard look at the building. In fact, there are holes in the wall now that weren't there before. I'm talking about the interior face of the wall now so that they could inspect not just the front of the stucco, but the back, you know, the laugh and so forth and the condition. So the team feels that it's actually in good shape and can be saved. Remember, the carriage house was built basically at the same time as the Sanborn House. And look at the work that the Historical Society has been doing and all of that is original as well. As far as, you know, mold, I think of mold like I think about other hazardous materials and, you know, abatement needs and so forth. So we have a full hazardous materials accounting of the building, including assessments of mold and where it is and, you know, how to get rid of it. There's a significant allowance in the project, Pam, for hazardous material abatement. And that certainly includes dealing with the mold on the project. Not aware of any issues around the foundation in particular, you know, we could certainly get back and ask that. Others have expressed just concern about the actual soil conditions that the building sits in. And if that presents a problem, that came up, I think, in an EFPBC meeting a couple of months ago. Ran that through TAPA Architects and the answer back was that the structural engineer doesn't have any concerns. I will say just quickly that Jay and Dr. Hackett and I did meet with the Winchester Historical Society. That's a private group, but their home is the Sanborn House. They occupy that building as part of a 99 year historic preservation lease that was actually approved by town meeting several years ago. You know, that's their home, so they certainly have some interest and concern about how this project would work and having a construction site right nearby. And so Dr. Hackett and Jay and the architect have committed to, you know, working as closely as we can with the Historical Society to minimize the impact on their operations and access to their building as well.
Okay, great, thanks, Chris. All right, we're going to jump on to Article 28 now. This is a majority vote. The proponent is the Select Board. And this is for the town to appropriate $75,000 from free cash for preliminary engineering services for traffic improvements associated with the Lynch Elementary School project. This is in response to a policy adopted by the Select Board in 2018, was a policy on traffic studies for school expansion projects. The goal is to evaluate not just circulation within the school and directly adjacent to school, but actually to look at traffic in the surrounding neighborhoods as well. So this article would undertake, would fund the undertaking of a traffic study to evaluate particular pedestrian and bike movements, infrastructure and potential improvements to support safety enhancements and network connectivity in the networks on both sides of the school, including the Pond Street Quarter, Middlesex Street, Sylvester Ave, Main Street and Canal Street. Happy to take any questions on this one? So there's a question in the chat from Richard Rohan. What is the extent of surrounding neighborhoods that will be included in this engineering study? Will this study include the Lynch students living east of Main Street? For example, the River Road Apartments? So it will evaluate a portion of Main Street, since we do know children come from the other side of Main Street to Lynch. It will not go kind of east of Main Street, but there will be some evaluation of those corridors coming from the school, coming to the school from Main Street and even just right off the other streets that we're looking at. So that is in the background, which I know just came out this afternoon. So probably most folks didn't have time to review it before this evening's meeting. And Chris, do you have your hand up still?
I do. I just wanted to put in a quick plug for this and then ask you a question, Beth. So the best example of where this was actually put to use recently was in front of McCall Middle School. So we did a two-phase expansion at McCall. It was completed about a year, year and a half ago. So that whole intersection of Washington Street and Main Street that's been redesigned and rebuilt, as well as the narrowing of, I think it's Mystic Valley Parkway, has really done a terrific job, in my opinion, of making it safer. And that was really the whole point. And so we don't really kind of know where this is going to go in terms of what the recommendations would be. But I just want to give credit to the Select Board on kind of putting this policy in place. The question actually that I had for you, Beth, was, I think, as I understand it, you're looking for the money now in the spring so you can begin to do the work. The gestation period, you know, for an elementary school is probably different than some roadwork, but maybe not by much. Do you know if, is the goal to be coming back to Fall Town Meeting with a specific designs and funding requests? Or might that come even later, maybe like, say, spring of '23? Or is it just too soon to say?
Yeah, I think it's too soon to say. So obviously, the goal is to start the study before the end of the school year this year so that we can get traffic and pedestrian counts during the nicer weather, where we have, you know, more people taking advantage of walking and biking to school. So that's kind of the reason, partly to get it done, to get the money at this springtime meeting. And then from there, you know, we expect a consultant will develop a series of recommendations. Some of it may be in the form of concept plans with some associated cost estimates. And then we'll have to decide whether it makes the most sense to come back at fall or springtime meeting for future funding.
Thank you, Beth.
Sure. And Chris, I just want to thank you and Jay for all your great responses for Article 26 and 27. There was a lot of information and you did a great job explaining that to everybody. So thank you.
Well, we'll try to get that up on the website soon in an orderly fashion. I appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions on Article 28?
Helen.
Go ahead, Helen.
Beth, in this particular town meeting, how much is being requested from free cash? And secondly, how much is available for free cash? Because I see a lot of numbers here.
There is. Yeah, and I apologize. I meant to do that tally before I got on the call this evening. So I don't have that number all tallied up. But you're right, there are several articles on here that are using free cash. We, our certified free cash value, we were somewhere around 13% of operating, our operating revenue. Our operating, you know, operating reserve policy is somewhere typically between 6 and 10%. I think we're closer to 13% at the close of Fall Town Meeting. But we certainly have a lot of things here where we're using free cash for.
How much in dollars? How much in dollars?
You know, I don't, I apologize. I don't have that number off the top of my head. But we'll certainly have that information available for town meeting.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Anything else on Article 28? Okay, moving on to 29. This is a majority vote. The proponent is the Personnel Board. There are 10 motions under this article and I'll just briefly run through them. The first motion is to delete and establish a new Schedule 6, which is the Recreation Compensation Schedule effective June 1st of 2022. The goal is to bring those recreation salaries in line with the state's minimum wage and make it more competitive for the recreation department to be able to hire staff over the summer. Motions two and three involve the creation, classification and reclassification of several positions, including an archivist, health inspector, payroll benefits coordinator to payroll manager. And then the human resources coordinator is being reclassified to become the human resources slash benefits coordinator. Motions four and five is to increase the, both to change and then to fund an increase in the stipend for the town's fair housing director. Motion six and seven are related to cost of living increase for municipal non-union employees. One is to approve the wage adjustment and one is to fund it. Motions eight and nine are related to the approval of a collective bargaining agreement for the Police Superior Officers Association. One is to approve the wage schedules and one is to fund the wage increases. And then finally, motion 10 is to establish the FY23 unallocated wage account to fund increases for collective bargaining agreements that have not yet been settled. Any questions on this one? I believe Peter Shonitz is here as well from the Personnel Board. I believe Peter Schonitz is here as well from the personnel board. If you want to make a statement, Peter, go ahead, Helen.
I was gonna ask what the dollar value of all these changes is. How much is it gonna cost?
So there is a separate personnel board report that is being is being sent out with the motion book. It went out this afternoon.
Okay.
It's all detailed in there that I don't have anything kind of tallied up and a bottom number for the ten motions, but it is all detailed in that.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
Sure, you're welcome. Yep. Any further question on Article twenty-nine? Okay, we will move on to Article thirty. This is a two-thirds vote. The proponent is the finance committee, and this is a consent agenda item. This is for the town to raise and appropriate thirty thousand dollars to the Building Stabilization Fund pursuant to Chapter sixty-nine of the Acts of twenty, excuse me, two thousand and two. And this is related to the installation of a high-efficiency energy boiler at Rocko School that was a was put in place in two thousand and twelve, and there was an agreement that that a portion of that would be transferred from the general fund to the Building Stabilization Fund each year to support the debt service on the bonds for the boiler installation. So this is a continuation of that requirement from prior town meetings. Any question on this one? Okay, we're going on to Article thirty-one. This is a majority vote on the consent agenda. The component is the finance committee. And this is to, for the town to fix the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year twenty twenty-three, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three for the revolving funds established pursuant to Winchester's code of bylaws for the archival center, energy use, supportive health clinics, grass fields, synthetic fields and historical commission. Any question on this one? Saying none, we will move on to Article thirty-two. This is a majority vote, but the proponent is the town manager. This item is on the consent agenda. This is that the town will authorize the treasurer with the approval of the town manager and the select board to borrow money in anticipation of revenue for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section four. And to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year to renew any notes or notes that be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with MGL, Chapter forty-four, Section seventeen. And this allow, is an annual article that allows the treasurer to borrow funds in, in anticipation of revenues for the following fiscal year. Any questions on this one? Okay, we move to Article thirty-three. This is a majority vote, majority vote on the consent agenda, and the proponent is the select board. This is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to be used with such sum as it may be available from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for maintenance, repair, alteration, relocation or improvement of other townways and authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, emit the main or otherwise any necessary easements or other interests in the land. This is our standard article every year where we basically accept our chapter ninety money from the state related to road work. Any questions on this one? All right, Article thirty-four. This is a majority vote, and the proponent is the town manager. This is to see if the town will authorize and direct the board of assessors to take any sum of money from available funds to reduce the tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, to transfer funds to or from the stabilization fund or take any reaction related there too. This is again, a standard article that we have every year at the end of town meeting. Any questions on this one? Okay, and we are at the last article. So this is Article thirty-five to see, this is a majority vote. The proponent is the select board, and this is to see if the town will vote to hear or accept committee reports dissolved committees, authorize new committees or take any action related there too, and we have no motions received to date under this article. And with that, I think we have gone through the list of articles here. I see one question maybe here. Oh, thank you, Carol. Any questions before we close out tonight's meeting? All right. Well, I appreciate everybody for joining us and look forward to seeing everyone in person on April twenty-fifth. Thank you very much.